This is the regular meeting of the Mason City City Council for August 16, 2011, at 7:00. Just a note for everybody, packets we have up here you can find on our website, masoncity.net, on the far right-hand top screen, and so your government scroll down to the Mayor and Council and find that, it says packets and agendas, and you'll be able to go through any of the packets that you would like to, in real-time. Just a note here before I call roll, we had in the very recent last week or two, we had a Navy SEAL from North Iowa, John Tummelson, and 29 of his brethren who passed away in Afghanistan, serving our country, and I just want to make a note that I believe this council myself, and I believe the entire public of Mason City and our region, thank you very much for the service. We'll call the meeting to order, and let the record reflect that all council members are present, with the exception of Mr. Nelson. Is their motion a second without the agenda?
We're going to pull 18.
I figured I'd do that. We're going to pull 18, so we'll pull 18, and is there a motion, a second, for everybody 18?
Someone?
Is there a second?
Second.
All of those favorites say aye.
Aye.
All of those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, well, we have a special item of business tonight, two of them, I believe, well, we have a few of them, actually. Can we have Mr. Peter and Coach Root come on? We're very honored tonight in Mason City to have with us Jake Peter. Mr. Peter is the all-time hits leader in Mason City history. He owned school records for single saves and home runs, 13; single season saves, 6. He's the career leader in home runs, runs, RBIs, and doubles at Mason City. He hit .401 with 13 home runs and 43 RBIs and 17 doubles. On the hill, he was 8-3 with a .245 ERA and 68 strikeouts and 14 walks. With his fastball touching about 92 miles per hour this season after multiple games where he put the Mohawks on his back with his right arm, and seeing time as a pitcher, he was very comfortable as well. He's going to Creighton this year as a position player with the ability to play either second base, shortstop, or third, and as Coach Root said, "He's the best player I've ever coached", which is quite a testament coming from Coach Root. We're very proud of him. We have this certificate of recognition. It's the City of Mason City, Iowa honors Jake Peter, high school all-stater for success in achieving the honor of Player of the Year in Iowa by the Iowa High School Baseball Coaches Association, and I believe this council myself can give you hearty applause, and good luck in your future, gentlemen. Whereas our children are our biggest asset and the future of our community, whereas child safety is of great importance, whereas August 31, 2001 is the first day of school, whereas Kate Haverson lost her life while trying to board a school bus, whereas Kate's Law is bill before our legislature that would strengthen fines to penalty professors who stop for a school bus, now therefore I, Eric Buckmeyer, Mayor of Mason City, Iowa, do hereby recognize the first day of school, August 31, 2011, as watching the little ones' day in the City of Mason City, Iowa, and I urge all citizens to join me in remembrance of Kate Haverson by exercising caution during school hours. And I believe we have Ms. Canning here to accept. As it were, we happen to have one more child safety item this evening, number two, and we'll call Gary Lindgren and Mark Stanton from our Quanis Club here. Make a presentation.
My name's Gary Lindgren, I'm the president of River City Quanis Club here in Mason City, Iowa, and Mark Stanton is a member of ours at the club. I'd like to have Chief Ashbrook come up. Quanis Club is a global organization of volunteers dedicated to changing the world, one child and one community at a time, and we believe in safety for children, we're all about children, everything we raise goes to children throughout our community and the North Iowa area. So, our second year of providing helmets, two years ago we started doing this, and we felt it was time to do it again. We have 100 helmets that will be going into police cars, and as they see children who have one and need one, they will be giving them a free helmet for the River City Quanis Club. So, we appreciate all you do with public safety and programming relative to the safety of children. Thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you very much to the Quanis Club, to give them from our council, myself, and our PD, a very welcome, thank you. All right, well, number three is the quarterly report by Main Street Mason City, and we have here tonight, their recently appointed executive director, Marty Walsh.
It looks like they're not able to read my version of the PowerPoint, it's on the newer version of Excel or PowerPoint, it sounds like, so it's not, yeah, it's not reading the newer version. So, I have my slides here, I can kind of relay the information, if anyone would like to see a copy of the PowerPoint, I can send it along. So, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody, especially the City Council, for all the work you've done, both legislatively to support Main Street, voting to support having a main street organization here, funding, and also for all the work you do to support the downtown businesses, I see it many of you shopping downtown, eating downtown, many of you serve on our committees, you volunteer hours, city staff that does tons of work for Main Street, that's all very, very important to us, we couldn't survive without our volunteers, both in the city and in general public. I was going to start tonight by talking about our mission statement, because I think it's extremely accurate. It's to preserve, enhance, and promote downtown Mason City as a business, cultural, and residential destination for the benefit of the entire community, and I really want to stress that benefit of the entire community. Downtown is not just for people who live and work downtown, it's really a service that can be enjoyed by everybody in the entire community, and the best way for us to work for the entire community is for all of you to get involved, so there's always volunteer opportunities, so please join us. And Main Street, we work with a lot of different partners, we work with city staff, different commissions, we work with Chamber, with Visit Mason City, with Economic Development Commission, of course, we work with our businesses downtown, we work with civic and social groups like the J.C.'s, and we work with the State of Iowa, State EDC, and also Main Street Iowa, which is our parent organization, they gave us a lot of assistance. Through this work with these organizations, we've seen a lot of great development downtown, we have a few new businesses opening up that I was going to talk about tonight. Splash is one of them, around Second Street Northeast, they moved from a different location in Mason City where they didn't have a retail operation, not a storefront thing, they've since moved, and they've seen a great increase in business, they're ridiculously busy, it's impossible to get ahold of them, because of how much business they're doing, they're doing a lot of custom t-shirt printing, screen printing, embroidery, things like that. Another new opening business is Chop Restaurant in 11, which is at 711 South Delaware. That restaurant hired on 14 full-time staffers, four part-time staffers, they're rehabilitating a building, and they have plans to rehabilitate the second and third story of that building, very large project, very excited, they're doing it right, and we're helping them a lot on that project. Of course, the historic park inn, opening up, kind of in their soft opening, rolling towards a grand opening, and I've talked to a number of business owners, one business owner said that last weekend was like a Christmas weekend for them, they did as much business as they did the week before Christmas. Another one has done three times as much business in the last two weeks as they had done in their previous best week ever. The impact is already starting to be realized, I guess, and not even fully open. Streetscape, same thing, we're finally getting streets open again, people understand there was delays, but intersections are open, we'll have intersections open completely over the next couple of weeks, and we'll be in pretty good shape for that. It's a great service to be able to offer brand-new infrastructure, it's like they're moving into an office park out there, brand-new sewers, brand-new sanitary, brand-new water mains, brand-new streets, it's important to realize there's a lot that goes on underground. All this spells out to what adds up to, I gotta try and read some very small numbers here, private investment over the last four months, complete private investment, $970,200. Ongoing private investment, $659,493.27, some people are very precise. And also, in planned investment, when I say planned, I don't mean kind of pine sky, I mean people who have started writing checks but have not started knocking out walls, is an additional $906,000. All of that adds up to $2,000, $2,535,693.27, again, all in the last four months. This is all private investment from private individuals and corporations in our downtown area. You can add to that about another $200,000 right outside of downtown district, I have to keep track of what happens inside the Main Street district, and this also doesn't include two major projects downtown that I wasn't able to get specific values of, I would estimate that between another $200,000 and $300,000 ongoing projects. Some of the planned out, we do have some great businesses coming downtown, although those of you who may have been down on Pedestrian Plaza might have seen the White Sale, the White Sale is a store that was in, they had a location in Clear Lake, they've expanded three times in the last four years, and they're now opening a location in Mason City, it's going to be kind of a gift spa salon-type store, they will not be doing salon services right away, but they have that sort of gift items. Inside the brick-and-tile building, we're seeing some renovation of a little form of office space into a restaurant space, going to be a deli down there, just to be an all-you-need experience. Oakleaf Comics is also relocating to downtown, it'll be the covered pet shop building, they're taking the vacant building space, they're open seven days a week, they're expanding, and they're upgrading downtown housing, too. In addition to that, I've talked to a lot of people, we got about one to two requests a week on new business assistance, people who are opening artist galleries, restaurants, gift shops, professional services, and some of the things that we can do to help those people, there's design assistance that either we offer or the State of Iowa offers through Main Street. People pay anywhere from $2,500 to $7,500 to have downtown resource people come into their communities, because we're a Main Street community, we get those resources for free. A few months ago, we did about $2,500 for the damage to downtown in about half an hour that we would have had to pay for otherwise, we had people come in and check out some of these new businesses. We also do business plans with that same program, or through our partnerships with Papa John's Center, we can, they know that there's some downtown businesses that are opening up, and we encourage them to follow, to keep that in mind when it's a little different opening business downtown than it would be out on the west end of town. Big thing that helps a lot of people is financial incentive research, we keep an ongoing list, I keep an ongoing list, if there are grants available, if there are low-interest loans available, if there is, right now we just got a new one for asbestos remediation, 100% up to $5,000 for asbestos remediation for these historic buildings in these second, third stories that can't be used right now, pretty expensive, no more. In addition to those projects, we have, excuse me, a lot of other things going on. Main Street Market runs every Saturday, 8 to noon, I've seen quite a few of you down there, this is a great opportunity, it brings people downtown on Saturday, pools of people who might not be there, also gives us opportunity to help develop some businesses, some of our vendors are looking at very seriously going from out-of-home business to brick-and-mortar type business, which is really great news, but something that was unexpected to me, some of our businesses who already are downtown are coming out to the market and jumping up a lot of business for their normal things and kind of redirecting to this normal downtown, catching those people who aren't normally coming downtown. Another big project is our available real estate inventory, obviously, there's a lot of projects, a lot of available property listed on the Mason City MLS site, which is extremely helpful, but there's also properties that are for rent, and properties that are more casually for sale that we keep track of, that if the right person came along, we know whether or not Mr. so-and-so might be interested in selling or renting the property to them, which is something that takes a lot of investigative work on our part. Big thing that the council just voted on a few weeks ago, and Main Street will be officially approving in the next week, is the facade master plan that we will be project managers on. That project is taking 14 historic facades, storing them, using $500,000 in federal money, this leverages $45,000 in private investment, at least with a 10% pay-in, in addition, $5 million in loans made available by our local banks for further private development in downtown. There's $150,000 revolving loan that's going to pay back 2% interest, so above the savings rates of our CDs for the city, and hopefully it continues to spur some downtown development so our private property can match our public property. And again, I thank the city so much for putting so much support into downtown for the past two years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh, very much, you guys have done a great job down there, it's really starting to come around. Council, would you like to do a round of questions? Mr. Walsh?
Yeah, Mr. Walsh, would you like to announce to the world that you're having your Friday night, this invite night coming?
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Yes, this Friday, one of our programs we've put on is a Friday Night Live event at the Constitution Hill downtown, right in Central Park, it's Friday from 6 to 10, the John Heffley Band and Paul Wetzle will be playing, and I invite everybody to come out, it's great timing. Thank you.
Come on out. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Thank you, your word. All right, well, number four, we've got a quarterly report by North Iowa Corridor Economic Development Incorporated Executive Director, Brent Willett.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Let me start by complimenting Mr. Marty Walsh for all the work that he's doing with Main Street, Mason City, he does not have an easy job, I think you all recognize that, he's doing a wonderful job for us. Again, thank you for the opportunity to provide a review of corridor activity in the second quarter of 2011, and a preview of our third quarter. Many of you have heard me discuss the fact that we see our mission in North Iowa as a three-legged stool, if you will, this is retention and expansion from which the greatest number of capital dollars and jobs created generally originates in our regional economy, this is attraction, a critical component of any economic development strategy in business startup and incubation. Whether it be retention, expansion, attraction, or startup project, we live and die by the activity, you may, many of you have heard me speak to this in our quote-unquote lead pipeline project, which come our way via a series of outlets, including several outlets which I want to bring you up to speed, have undergone a significant amount of change of late. The Iowa Department of Economic Development, of course, has been recast as the Iowa Partnership for Economic Partnership, has under, along with its organizational adjustment, has undergone some significant layoff activity at the project management level, and in our view, cannot now be fully counted upon to be as reliable a lead generator as in the past at this moment. Market leverage is another dynamic that we see in our lead pipeline, vis-a-vis the generation of leads through a concerted effort to remain connected to trends which provide our region in North Iowa a strategic competitive advantage, one that I want to point out to you this evening, we're presently seeing at the corridor at the moment a significant uptick in lead volume specific to the technology sector, companies seeking strategic physical location of service personnel and facilities between the Des Moines and Twin Cities metro areas. Growth and improvement in online virtual product is something we're working closely on, we're pursuing a full-scale review and renovation of the recently released northiowcorridor.com, which is a very good start for us from a web presence perspective, but in a business where 90 to 95% of our clients interface with us electronically before they ever speak to us on the phone or in person, we have to improve that effort, and we've charged our staff with undergoing a full-scale review by years. And early-stage capital-intensive relocation prospects are coming our way via the Community Venture Network membership we maintain, a quarterly gathering of companies considering relocation and economic developers like me vying for their attention. What's our project scope look like right now? As of today, we're currently working 10 active attraction projects, including which provide potential for more than 250 new jobs and close to $300 million in capital investment, eight active existing business expansion projects currently working which provide the potential for the creation of more than 80 new jobs and hundreds of retained jobs and more than $13 million in capital investment, five startup slash community venture network projects we consider to be active, another 14 we've categorized into a pending products category. Attraction activity has been relatively strong in the last quarter, corridor serving has hosted four separate client onsite visits since March, all four of those clients being out-of-state companies, including one client they remain heavily and actively engaged with, who has visited the region three times, entered into very substantive discussions with project pieces and plans for the fourth visit shortly. Retention and expansion activity has been strong, but could be stronger in my view. Significant amount of anxiety we're seeing as we, among our business decision-makers, relative to future trends and growth projections, I think we're seeing some cautious optimism that things will be better in the next 12 months, we ask that question specifically when we interview our business leaders, and they're saying cautious optimism by significant margins. Significant investment growth, however, in the next 12 months, we're not seeing a high level of optimism to that, in that direction, instead seeing a more status quo capital and job creation projection. Announced expansion projects in the corridor in the last quarter that the corridor's been involved with include that of the Titan Pro Expansion Project in Clear Lake, the City of Clear Lake has authorized property tax incentives to secure that expansion, that project continues to move forward, and of course, in our most recent quarter, we were pleased to help cut the ribbon on the Cardboard Kitchen Solutions, $1.5 million, 20-job expansion project at Mason City. Of course, the City of Mason City in this body was very, very involved in sending that project to ensure it went forward, and we're very pleased to see the result. Also, since my last address to council, we've seen significant activity relative to the pending sale of a parcel in Quillwick Business Park, we hope to be interfacing with City of Quillwick on this project in the coming weeks. Recent corridor initiatives separate from project work include attendance at the International Bio Trade Show in Toronto as part of an Iowa contingent on the behalf and at the expense of the North Central Iowa Alliance, the Regional Marketing Group of which we're a member, from at least one project, from which at least one project for North Iowa has been a result. We conducted a headquarters visit scheduled to the Twin Cities in June, calling on companies located in Mason City, Clear Lake, Saratoga County, which are headquartered in Twin Cities Metro. We've also struck a strategic partnership with NCIA and the UNI Center for Strategic Marketing to offer excess capacity market research and marketing services to targeted and qualified North Iowa companies at a fraction of the cost via grant from IDED and NCIA member funds. Essentially, that program means that we've identified significant facility excess capacity within primarily our industrial manufacturing sector in Mason City, Clear Lake, several companies which maintain significant excess capacity, we're engaging them to assist them in the marketing of that facility space in the spirit of striking strategic partnerships and joint ventures. Some other organizational multiples, the corridor 2012 fiscal budget has been approved, I'm pleased to report it reduces below 50% of our requests and reliance on public funds by setting aggressive private sector investor funding goal of $200,000, also reduces overhead costs, drives those savings into marketing expenditure allocations. We have wrapped our 2011 in-private investor campaign, which, again, I am pleased to report has beaten budget by nearly 5%, bringing in $198,000 and change in 2011. We, in the last quarter, announced the corridor Small Business Revolving Loan Fund, which is a redeployment of flood relief funds from 2008, is now available in $10,000 or less loan increments to small businesses of $1 million in sales or less than 50 employees or less, and I want to make a point there, those funds are not available exclusively, are not restricted exclusively to flood-impacted businesses any longer. My predecessors at the corridor, I think, wrote that grant very effectively, and so we're now able to make those funds more widely available as we recast them. We have secured three-year present-level funding commitments, of course, from the Clear Lake EDC and the City of Mason City, that has instigated the creation of the merger task force charged with overseeing the formal legal merger of the Clear Lake EDC, Mason City EDC, by years end. We hosted a session with corridor board member Mark Hewitt of Clear Lake Bank and Trust, which saw him report on the condition of the economy from his perspective as a member of the Federal Reserve Board of Chicago. We remain engaged and have offered our assistance to the greatest extent relative to locating a new carrier for the essential air Mason City Airport service. As you all know, the August 9 deadline for submissions has been extended indefinitely, Mason City, we're pleased to have seen that Mason City was not among the 13-year-old airports cut out of the AS by the debt ceiling bill. And we hosted IPEP Director Debbie Durham at our annual meeting in July, we're preparing legislative plans on issues specific which state will affect Mason City and North Iowa, enterprise zone, tax increment financing, potential reductions to commercial property taxes, all of which impact Mason City and the City of Mason City, Director. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. All right, folks, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Willett? Commons?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Everything you say sounds good, and it's actually kind of, you're a wordsmith. I am curious about this, and I've asked a couple of board members, your involvement now in retail and commercial, I've scoured your corridor reports and your websites, and everywhere I look, I don't see anything there that would lead an individual or a company that's in retail or commercial to seek you out for help. So, is that a new, I mean, the board members I talked to hadn't, weren't aware of any policy of just, it's always been, it's always been an issue, for those of you that have maybe paid attention, or maybe you haven't, about are we going to go into retail furnishing incentives, packages? And like I said, I went to your site, knowing that there's a few retail people out there that have done some, some big things that were actually mentioned tonight by Mr. Walsh, that didn't ask for a penny, and I'm sure you were aware of those since you've been here, but I guess my question would be this, did your board direct you to work with, with retail?
No, no, and...
And how did that happen?
In what regard? Well, we, certainly, the corridor's primary objective is to inspire capital investment and job creation and retention in the primary sector job category, separate from retail.
What's your opinion on that?
However, I have not received direction from my board that we are to, to not address anything else. We, of course, have limited time and financial resources with respect to working on projects, and so we've got to be judicious in those projects that we work with, however, I don't see a definite line that we must be specific only to primary sector jobs. I will say that we are committed to that sector more than any other.
Well, I can tell you, Mr. Walsh, from my experience, and I have a lot of it, it's, we've never crossed that line into the retail business, I think there was a grant given out, a forgivable loan one time, and I'm just wondering, is that going to be something going to be discussed at your corridoring group, and we'll be discussing the new policy changes? Here's my point, Mr. Willett, I represent the tax barriers of Mason City, and I have had some contact with City Hall, and I tried to find out about an issue that's brought forward tonight, if City Hall was involved with it, you know, appropriate people, and they weren't, and that's what I kind of wonder about. I asked some questions, Brent, as you know, I mean, they filled out those contact reports, I would imagine, so I asked questions, and so it's kind of new to me, and I don't know if the council's going to admit it or not, there's a lot of comment out there, and I just don't know if I can hang my hat on, I can't, I can't tell them, well, it's a policy, it's a, you know, it's, I don't know what to, when someone tells me they invested $300,000 downtown and didn't receive one penny or a 10-year tax payment or anything, makes me wonder...
Yeah, and I can't speak to past projects, I'm not aware of a project which endears the, no, I can't, and of course, I can't speak to the activity of city staff, but I'm not aware of a policy among, inside the North Iowa corridor which endears us to a specific economic sector with respect to project worth.
But yet, you understand how hard Mr. Walsh's job is, and he was talking about the investment downtown, so you obviously are aware of some things, so I just wondered how some of those things passed us by, there's been some good investment downtown, and they didn't receive any, any help?
Well, I think that each project has a personality, and has challenges and opportunities to it, and so I just can't put in a box projects that have occurred, that could have occurred in a different way, I can only deal with what's in front of us.
Well, then, what gave you the gumption in the work with this client we have tonight? What gave you the gumption to seek that particular business out and offer help?
That's a client that has been a, has been a part of what we... That's a client that has been a, has been a part, a part of what we at the corridor call project tracking, projects that we are interfacing with companies with respective expansion, well, in this case, expansion opportunities. For some time, this was in fact a project that was on that project list before I arrived at the corridor. So as part of our due diligence, we began to interface with that client, understood the needs, the opportunities, and subsequently connected the city.
Even though, even though it was retail?
Correct.
Karen, anything to say? Anybody else? All right, seeing none, thank you, Mr. Will.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity.
All right, well, now's the time for public forum, mayor and city council, welcome comments from the public on agenda items. You're asked to give your name, address, and the agenda item that you are going to be speaking on. And please keep your comments concise and let me do, pardon?
Hello, my name is Jose Barrett Jr. I live at 49 Second Circle, Mason City, Iowa. And in comment to what you're talking about and you're talking about retail, I think it's because no one's promoting it. I have a business plan, a very good business plan. I've talked with Robin of the, of the Chamber of Commerce and she knows that I've talked to her before and I have my flash chart before and she didn't say anything about going to you. So there's no one promoting it. So, you know, and I know the, the Chamber works with you closely and it's probably in the same building. And she didn't tell me to go to you and I'm in retail, so it's not being promoted, that's why.
Thanks, Eric. Anybody else? All right, we'll see, none? We'll move on to the consent agenda, as I noted earlier, and we pulled item 18. We get consent agenda here. Five minutes, ready minutes of August 2nd, work session minutes of August 9th, 2011. Number six, claims dated August 4th, 11, 2011. Seven permits and, oh, so let me back up on five, there is a correction, that's on minutes. The August 9th work session minutes, council member Nelson was noted as, was not noted as absent, that they should read August 9th, not the 19th. Six claims, August 4th, 11, 2011. Seven permits, there's an addendum, addition of Homer's Brother Service Event on September 1st, 2011. Eight, unannated financial report. Nine, mayor recommending approval, appointment of Jay Law and Scott Mormon to Megan Mason City Economic Club Incorporated. Ten, administrator recommending approval, acceptance of civil service list, police sergeant and lieutenant. Eleven, administrator recommending approval, appoint hire Linda Bucknell as intermediate accounting clerk for the finance department, pay level nine, step one. Twelve, administrator recommending approval, appoint hire Michael Ricker as mechanic to the operation and maintenance department. Thirteen, administrator recommending approval, installation of permanently mounted stop signs on temporary bases on South Monroe Avenue at the intersecting streets 26th and 27th Streets of South Monroe Avenue to be removed upon vacation of Madison School Building of Mason City School System. Fourteen, administrator recommending approval, resolution accepting work in order to payment for construction of 19th Street Southwest Water Main Extension Project, number 10-1017. Fifteen, administrator recommending approval, 2008 resolution accepting warranty fee from 1021 Third Street, North East. Sixteen, administrator recommending approval, resolution rescinding resolution number 11-214, adopting new resolution and lieu thereof, authorizing a contract amendment with Kelly Damlish and LLC of Mount Vernon, Iowa, traditional asbestos testing and FAY and monitoring related to the city flood buyout programs. Seventeen, administrator recommending approval, A, resolution authorizing contract amendment number two with Sarah Corduro County Abstract Company for abstract services related to buyout number two. B, resolution authorizing contract amendment number two with Sarah Corduro County Abstract Company for abstract services related to buyout number four. Nineteen, administrator recommending approval, resolution award of contract for urban construction of Mason City, Iowa, secure technically board up. Fifteen, store structures acquired through the CDBG buyout. Number twenty, administrator recommending approval, $1.4 million GIO bond, series 2011. A, A, resolution appointing paying bond agent, bond registrar and transfer agent, approval to payment, paying agent and bond registrar and transfer agent agreement and authorizing the execution of the agreement. B, approval of tax exemption certificate. C, approval of continued exposure certificate. D, resolution authorizing the issuance of $2.95 million GIO refunding bond, series 211. B. Do you want to do A, B, C, and D at all? Okay. A, resolution paying agent, bond registrar and transfer agent, approval to paying agent and bond registrar and transfer agent agreement and authorizing the execution of the agreement. B, approval of tax exemption, exemption certificate. C, approval of continued exposure certificate. D, resolution authorizing the issuance. Twenty-one, administrator recommending approval, A, resolution rescinding resolution number 11-176 in its entirety. B, resolution award of contract systems of Madison, Wisconsin for financial software and hardware upgrades. Folks, is there members of there, any items that you'd like to hold? All right, we're seeing none, Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of number eighteen.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call roll?
Marcus.
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Marsters?
Yes.
All right, thank you, council. Number twenty-two, administrator recommending approval, ordinance mending the city code Title 12 zoning by repealing chapter eight zoning districts, general section two zoning form and function table, Article C, Office, Chapter 14, Z6, industrial district, section nine of forms and functions table, Article C, Office, and Chapter 14, Section eight, Z6, are restricted industry and adopting new articles of sections and lieu thereof related to lama gay, lift work, buildings and conditional use in Z6 are districts. And I believe this is on second. Do we have a motion of second? On the ordinance, instead of final, call roll?
Marsters?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Tarquist?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Number twenty-three, administrator recommending approval, ordinance mending the city code Title 12 zoning by repealing chapter 16 zoning standards, section 12, refuse and recycle material, paragraph A, location screening in its entirety and a new paragraph A and lieu thereof. And we need to make a little quick correction on this. We amended the second last time when the city attorney like, a motion to, and a second to waive the second reading here this time. So we'll clean that up and then we'll go to the... Is there a motion of second to waive the second reading?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Marsters?
No, sir.
Anybody else? All right, seeing none, court call roll?
Silver?
Yes.
Marsters?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
Tarquist?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Number twenty-four, administrator recommending approval, ordinance mending the city code Title 12 zoning by repealing chapter 16 zoning standards, section 12, refuse and recycle material, paragraph A, location screening in its entirety and a new paragraph A and lieu thereof. And we need to make a little quick correction on this. We amended the second last time when the city attorney like, a motion to, and a second to waive the second reading here this time. So we'll clean that up and then we'll go to the... Is there a motion of second to waive the second reading?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Marsters?
No comment.
Mr. Tarquist? Anybody else? All right, court call roll?
Tarquist?
Yes.
Marsters?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes, all right, thank you, council. Do we have a motion of second that the ordinance be adopted on the final?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Marsters?
Yeah, I just wanted to know if there have been any comments in the past two weeks?
Number six here, any comments? Okay, thank you. Mr. Tarquist? Anybody else? All right, court call roll?
Marsters?
Yes.
Tarquist?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Number twenty-five, administrator recommending approval, ordinance mending the city code Title 12 zoning, repealing chapter 10, C3 suburban district, section four accessory buildings in chapter 11, C3 general urban district, section four accessory buildings in their entirety and adopting sections and lieu thereof. And we need to go back and do quick, the same, waive, is there a motion of second to waive this second reading?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Marsters?
No, thank you.
Mr. Tarquist, or excuse me, Mr. Silver?
No, sir.
All right, anybody else? All right, court call roll?
Marsters?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
Tarquist?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Chair will entertain a motion of second that the ordinance be adopted on final?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Marsters?
Same question, any comments from anybody in the past two weeks? No, sir. No issue.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Marsters, Mr. Silver?
I would just like to again reiterate the thanks for the hard work of the staff on this. I think it's going to be very helpful for a lot of people wanting to add on to their accessory buildings. Thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Silver, anybody else? All right, seeing none, it's on final, for the ordinance, court call roll?
Marsters?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
Tarquist?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Number twenty-six, administrator recommending approval, A, ordinance mending the city code Title 8, Chapter 2, police department in its entirety adopting a new, Chapter 2, and this will be on first. Is there a motion of second that the ordinance be received and placed on file?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Marsters?
I have nothing, thank you.
Mr. Tarquist? Anybody else? Court call roll?
Marsters?
Yes.
Tarquist?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
Thank you, council. B, ordinance mending the city code by repealing Title 8, Chapter 3, general offenses, section 2, carrying concealed weapons, section 4, communication with persons in jail, section 10, emergency vehicles, hence of section 13, prepasses acceptance of section 40 vending machines, section 43 misdemeanor theft, and section 16 inhalation of fumes prohibited in their entirety, adopting a new section 16. And this is on first as well. Council, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Marsters?
No comment.
Mr. Tarquist? Anybody else? All right, seeing none, court call roll?
Marsters?
Yes.
Tarquist?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
All right, thank you, council. C, ordinance mending the city code by repealing Title 9, Chapter 3, general offenses, article of drug paraphernalia in its entirety, this would be on first as well. Do we have a motion of second?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Marsters?
No, sir.
And then Mr. Silver? Anybody else? All right, seeing none, court call roll?
Marsters?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
Tarquist?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
All right, thank you, council. D, ordinance mending the city code by repealing Title 9, Chapter 1, traffic definitions in its entirety and adopting a new, Chapter 1, and this would be on first as well. Is there a motion of second? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Marsters?
No, sir.
Mr. Silver?
No.
Anybody else? Seeing none, court call roll?
Marsters?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Tarquist?
Yes.
Thank you, council. E, ordinance mending the city code by repealing Title 9, Chapter 2, traffic administration in its entirety, adopting a new, Chapter 2, this would also be on first. Do we have a motion of second?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Tarquist?
No, sir.
Mr. Marsters?
No, sir.
Mr. Tarquist?
So moved.
Anybody else? Seeing none, court call roll?
Marsters?
Yes.
Tarquist?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
All right. Out. Orients mending the city code by repealing Title 9, Chapter 3, traffic regulations, section, uh, section 2 careless driving, section 3, paragraph A, immediate report of accident, section 9, paragraph A, lights, section 11, overtaking vehicles on the right, section 13, operation of vehicles restricted, section 15, directional guidance of vehicles, section 16, paragraph A, operational restrictions, paragraph B, approach of authorized emergency vehicles, section 19, paragraph C, unintended motor vehicles, paragraph G, obstruction to driver's view, paragraph H, unlawful acceleration, paragraph I, use of seatbelts required, paragraph J, child restraint devices, section 20, driver's license, section 20.1, riding motorcycles, mo, excuse me, motorcycles, and section 22, registration of vehicles, adopting new sections where applicable. And this is on first as well. Do we have a motion of second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Marsters?
No, sir.
Mr. Silver?
No, sir.
Anybody else? All right, seeing none, we have a motion of second, court call roll?
Marsters?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
Tarquist?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Number twenty-seven, administrator recommending approval, resolution of support of proposed terms being included in agreement for private development by and between the city and Harley Davidson of Mason City, Iowa 100 South Federal Avenue. And before we take a motion of second on this, we'll let Mr. Trout open up and then introduce Mr. Willett and we'll take a motion of second and we'll go back to Mason City.
Thank you, Aaron. With this project, what we're dealing with is the retention prospect of Harley Davidson's in the city of Mason City. The project was considered and brought to us and we then met with Mathieu before in order to consider what type of package we would need to put together in order to retain their business in the community. Through that discussion, we ended up coming up with four different items that will need to be covered and addressed in our end proposal to the city council. First one being $100,000 forgivable loan that's forgiven at a rate of $10,000 per year for 10 years, continuing on their continued operation at this location in Mason City. Next item is a 10-year, 100% tax rebate on the new valuation created by their expansion and renovation. They'll continue to pay their taxes on their existing property value for all of their buildings. Consideration of $25,000 to assist in the relocation of the natural gas line that runs in the alley to the west of their building, which we paid for by the city of Mason City. And the last item being to go through the process of vacating and conveying now and looking on the west side of the current store to Harley Davidson. All of these items, we utilize our TIF district in order to pay for, which obviously utilizes money from the city's county and school in their process of their taxes as we collect from TIF, the projects such as this. Harley Davidson commits to completing an expansion and renovation of their project of approximately $1 million in increase in valuation. And they agreed, they agreed to retain 20 jobs that they currently have and add six new full-time positions to their workforce. Obviously, many customers come from a long ways away or to visit this Harley Davidson. We know that they're a destination for many people that shop and ride motorcycles. With this project, we would end up ensuring that we have a continued location of this company within the community. This, in saying fact, is similar to a few other retail projects that we've run relative to Y-Mage Torrance or Modern Clothers. Obviously, we need to continue to work towards the continued presence of this company and is a vital, important part of this community. And I recommend approval of this in saying fact.
Thank you, Mr. Trout. Mr. Willett, do you have any comments on this?
Thank you, mayor, council. I'll, I'll keep things brief. I, I fully, fully support from the board's perspective, Mr. Trout's recommendation. We did engage with Harley Davidson, Mason City, to understand their project considerations as well as challenges. I think that this package addresses each one of those and puts Mason City in a significantly strong position to not only retain the company, but see it grow both from a jobs, full-time job, full-time job perspective, capital investment perspective, aesthetic appeal perspective. And I think it is notable that we would be seeing as a result of this project, a significant improvement from an aesthetic perspective and reportedly traffic perspective, customer traffic perspective on South Federal, an area that could be, they could use this kind of thing at the present time. Those are some of the reasons that we see this as a very viable project. I encourage your consideration of the package and again, concur with, with Mr. Trout's recommendation to you and see.
All right. We'll entertain a motion of second here and then we'll, we'll let the administrator, the executive director of the corridor, and Mr. Miners is also here, Harley Davidson, entertain any questions.
Court roll?
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Marsters?
Yeah, I would like to make a comment. It's not specifically related to this, but it's tied to it. And Mr. Weaver referred... it's tied to it, and Mr. Weaver referred to that earlier in a conversation with you when you told me about this project, that I truly believe that both the E D C and city combined do need a plan on what we're doing, for retail or not, because, you know, what's fair for one is fair for another and so on and so on, and we've turned down, for example, the Indian head expansion with Kohl's and Best Buy and all that, because it was retail, we turned down that development for incentives up there, so I truly do believe we need a policy to deal with this, I mean, this is not just plain retail, this is very high-end retail, I understand that, and the cities, the taxpayers are going to give every penny back, I have no concern about that, so, thank you.
With regard to that, I think back in the first year that I was here, we looked at a couple of different proposals that I had to address, a systematic way to analyze and consider retail development, and this particular case, and I'll respond now to the question that was concerned of the corridor being involved, in normal procedure, whenever there is someone that is dealing with retail, I send them up to see Ms. Pam Meyer, our growth development director, and, and address any issues with her that she might have as far as potential and have her vet the application or consideration of a particular company. In this particular case, she wasn't able to be involved because she was on vacation, and so otherwise she would have been involved in this project from the very beginning, so we do have a system that I utilize when it comes to analyzing these types of companies, and as far as incentive package, I think it would be good to revisit, I think, a policy that we do to address so that we have a little more clear guideline, each project's different, but it would be nice to have a clear guideline. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Go ahead.
I, I just, from the corridor's perspective, Captain Marsters, I would agree with the supposition that we could do better to define our activities with respect to retail, industrial, commercial, and so I welcome that conversation, and I expect that our board of directors will embrace that as well.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Marsters. Mr. Hickey, do you have a second?
Yeah. One thing I've heard, I've heard some comments on both sides of the fence on this one, being on the council, I know one of the things, and this is kind of where I'm coming at from it, as you've seen over the last couple of years, our budgets seem to be one of the biggest issues we face on a yearly basis, and one of the ways that we raise revenues is through corporate taxes, and of course taxing the individuals under property taxes, and when I ran for council, one of the things I said is I wanted to help create a more business-friendly environment to try and create jobs, promote growth in Mason City. Now, as a council, we cannot create jobs, but what we can do is we can create an environment to help draw industry and business to Mason City, and the one thing I've heard about this is people say, well, they're not going to pay tax on this for ten years, and I want one thing for people to know, they're not going to pay tax on the new increment, they're still going to pay the tax that they're already paying on the building, but they're not going to pay the new increment in ten years, and that's going to be an extra million dollar valuation. Now, one of the things that we, issues that I see that we have in Mason City is we have, we've had a declining population, our age, and we have an aging population, the median age in Mason City is forty-one years old, the baby boomer generation is hitting, and we're going to lose a lot of people off the job force due to retirement, so one of my responsibilities that I look at as a council member, to hopefully, long-term, reduce and keep your taxes as low as possible, is to try and promote growth in job and industry and business, and even though we, some people feel that it's not the right thing to do, if we lose this business, I'd much rather keep them here in Mason City and have them paying their taxes in ten years, and more businesses hopefully in the future, to keep your taxes down instead of have a racism expansionally as the years go by, so that's why I'm in favor of this, I don't think we're going to lose any money, we're spending T I F dollars on this as well, and I know a lot of people don't realize how T I F works, if we spend a hundred thousand dollars on this project using T I F, it's going to equal about thirty-five thousand, thirty-six thousand out of our budget, roughly, now for them six jobs, we're going to spend six thousand dollars. The good thing about it, the people, thing that people don't realize, by spending that money, of course, the county loses out on it, and the school loses out by us spending it, the school still gets reimbursed by the state as a result of us using this money as well, so we've, we've basically used that money to our advantage to the fullest, and that's why I kind of support projects like this, and I think that's what we need to do moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. Anybody else? Mr. Tarquist?
I appreciate everything that's been said, and I would like to share with the public some of my own thoughts as I've worked through this. You know, I too have been concerned about crossing that perceived line that we've always had with retail, but this is a very unique opportunity, this is very unique retail, this is significant destination retail, and it's unlike any other retail in the community. Now, this is very different than the council being asked to invest in a startup business, this is very different than the council being asked to invest in a speculative business, businesses that have no proven track record of success, those would be completely inappropriate for the council to be invested in, and from time to time, people have asked for city support, and I believe we've appropriately said no. You know, Harley-Davidson is unlike a fast food restaurant, it's unlike a big box apartment store, it's unlike auto body shops, it's unlike car dealerships, where we have multiple companies competing in the same sector, and we have lots of consumer choices for our citizens. Harley-Davidsons are unique, it's the only one in the county, and in fact, it's the only one in surrounding counties. You know, with respect to any development-type project regardless of the sector, I am of the opinion that taxpayer money should be the last one to end, not the first one to end, and that too differentiates itself from some of the opportunities that have come to us in the past, where people may feel like we're not being completely fair. One of the things that I appreciate about this project is that we're talking about a million dollar investment, private investment in downtown Mason City, to me, that speaks volumes about the work that we have done in Mason City, and it also continues to move us forward, and will create incentives for other businesses to invest their private dollars in Mason City. Councilman Hickey shared some good things on a global perspective on the impact to the taxpayer, and I'd like to put it in kind of a dollars and cents from my perspective. Basically, a ten-year, one hundred percent tax rebate on the new valuation is not atypical at all, we do that for most development projects, sometimes the tax abatements run for even longer periods of time, so that's not unique in any way, this is standard operating procedure. Relocating the utility, we would typically do for a project of this magnitude, and in fact, we have recently on a number of projects over the last several years, vacating the alleys, no big deal. What I think draws everybody's attention to this particular incentive program is a hundred thousand dollar forgivable loan, and basically what we're talking about is ten thousand dollars a year for each of the next ten years, and if you stop and think that we've got about twenty-eight thousand citizens in Mason City, in round numbers, twenty thousand of them are taxpayers, we're talking about an expense to the average taxpayer of about fifty cents a year over the next ten years to cover this hundred thousand dollar loan. Now, if we do nothing, think about where Harley-Davidsons are located, most of the Harley-Davidsons are located in interstate corridors, think of the Big Barn in Des Moines, up in Albert Lea, over in Cedar Falls, Harley-Davidson is under pressure to be closer to I-35. If we don't spend this fifty thou, fifty cents per person in Mason City for the next ten years, what will happen? There's a very real probability that we will lose this outside the city limits, right now, we're picking up about ten thousand dollars a year in property taxes on existing valuation, which we will continue to collect, if we lose the project, that's the same as each of us having to pay an extra fifty cents a year to cover what we've just lost in valuation. So from that perspective, it's very close to a net watch, but there's more to it than that, because if we lose the project in Mason City, we also lose sales tax on sales. We have the potential to lose jobs, right now, they've got twenty jobs, I don't know how many of those people live in or outside of Mason City, it's really immaterial, but we do know that they're going to add six jobs, and that's a good thing, good thing, so even though this is unique, and on some levels, it's hard for us to get our hands around, because it's a little different than the way we've done things in the past, you know, one thing each of us hears up here every day is we can't keep doing things the same way, we need to create jobs, we need to create a spirit of economic vitality in the community, so for us to continue doing things the way that we've done in the past would be somewhat silly. I think this is a good opportunity, that's very low risk, Harley-Davidson's going to be here twenty years from now, and has been stated explicitly by Councilman Marsters, the taxpayers' rule are not at risk, it's just a matter of waiting for the return.
Thank you, Mr. Tarquist. Anybody else down here? Mr. Silver?
Quick question, Mr. Ryan, how long have you been in Mason City?
How long have I been in Mason City?
How long has Harley-Davidson?
Seventy-two, nineteen seventy-two. Yeah, I'm counting on forty years.